Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me? Because I don't hear myself. Yeah, I don't either.
No, it's not working.
One more. Check, check, test. I do have a, I have a green light. Check. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your attendance tonight. I really appreciate the turnout and the interest in the subject that we're going to be discussing tonight, which is primarily security and recent break-ins. I'm sure there's a lot of people that want to ask a lot of questions. You've given, you've been given the opportunity to, to present those questions in advance, which is very helpful because we can focus on especially the questions that have been asked by multiple people. So this town hall meeting is specific to the recent burglaries within the city. And joining me tonight is Mayor Protem Liam Mersch, Rolling Hills Community Association Board President Ty Bobbitt, and Deputy Darlene Lopez from the LA County Sheriff's Department in Lomita Station, and representatives from the city and RHCA staffs. We've received many questions via email in the past few days, and I'm sure there are plenty more this evening. In order to ensure concerns from those in attendance and at home are addressed in a timely manner, I'm requesting that those present write down any questions on the cards found on your seat or on the credenza to your left. Please hand them to Christian Horvath sitting to my left, and he will get them to us to help facilitate a productive meeting. And I'm going to turn it over to the presenters tonight just to say a few words to open the set up.
Thank you. I don't really have anything to say other than my heart goes out to the people who have had the victims of these recent crimes. When we had this last spate about five or six years ago of burglaries, our home was burglarized. So I know what you're going through, and I know it's a concern for everybody, and we're glad that you're here, and we appreciate it.
Ty, would you like to say a few remarks?
Sure. Good evening, and thank you for being here. I'm Ty Bobbitt, President of the Community Association. And I just want to let you know that our hearts go out to the riches and the smalls reads and everybody else who's been affected by crime here in the, in the city. We take it very seriously. We will be taking notes tonight from an association standpoint, things that we maybe could or should or things that we should be thinking about. But it is definitely a top-of-mind subject for us is security and the safety of our residents. So I would look forward to talking with you more about it as the evening goes on.
I'm Deputy Lopez.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Deputy Darlene Lopez. I'm the Community Relations Deputy for the City of Rolling Hills, and hopefully tonight I'll be able to answer your questions and maybe address some safety issues for future events.
And I feel to introduce myself, I'm Pat Wilson, currently serving as mayor for about the next six weeks or so. I'll presumably be handing it over to Leah for her leadership. I wanted to take just a few minutes to address some, some of the questions or comments that were made in the questions we received in advance and try to give a very basic description or understanding of the different responsibilities that the city has relative or as opposed to the association. And this is a very high-level description because there's all kinds of exceptions, and we deal with them all the time, both of us, with the city and with the RHCA. But the city responsibility is, public safety is the primary responsibility of the city. We have contracts with the police or with the sheriff's department and with the fire departments. They in turn manage their affairs directly. We don't have, we have a little influence over how they protect us, but we have a contract with them, and it's up to them to, to deliver on those contracts. Just very briefly, on fire safety, we are, we are cooperating with other cities on the peninsula for a program called Pano AI, which is a camera detection system that detects smoke with, throughout the whole peninsula, even beyond the peninsula in some cases. So, you know, we're, that's very top-of-mind for us, and we're also communicating, of course, with the association and with the other cities as far as fire safety. The city is also involved in a Siren project, which many of you may know about, that's coming. It's been a slow process, but we, we're actually making progress on it. And of course, the, our outstanding block captain program, which is, you know, second to none. The members of the block captain group just do an incredible job of keeping people organized and keeping them informed, and we really appreciate that. The association responsibility is more on the infrastructure side, but of course, there's exceptions to that, too. They maintain the, the streets, the trails. They have exclusive jurisdiction over the gate operations. They employ the gate attendants there, and they are the ones that maintain the, the records and allow you to add or delete guests from, from the list. So that's a very high-level description of the relationship between the two agencies, and I'm sure there's going to be more that come up as we go on about who is in charge of or responsible for what. So I, I took the time to go through the, I got two pages of questions that were submitted in advance. Are you going to collect the questions from the audience now?
If anybody, they can bring them up to me at any time.
If you have, if you have a question in the audience right now, you can just bring it up to Christian. But there is, there were several questions or comments about, that were the, that are essentially the same as far as what, what the questioners were asking. And there was several questions about private security and patrols that the city does not have private security. Yes, Jim?
Could the deputy summarize all the events that have occurred to the best of the sheriff's knowledge? I mean, because I have, I have heard of more different burglaries, and I have the dates to their knowledge, all the events before we answer questions so that everyone's up to date. How many events?
I'm just doing my initial reach-out here, and I'm going to turn it over to them to, to discuss. Okay, so there was questions about private security patrols. The city doesn't engage in any of that. The association has in the past and continues, but I'll let Ty address that directly. There is some, a lot of concern about trail monitoring and security. Again, an association-based question. Guest-listened maintenance, same thing. Delivery drivers, there is questions about who should be allowed in the city, and if that can be managed or controlled better. Again, association and camera systems along our border. And that is, once again, under the, the general direction of the association. So I'm going to let Deputy Lopez discuss the recent burglaries and, and, well, I'm going to let her do that first.
Okay, so do we have the residents who live on seven and eight Morgan Lane? Are they in here?
Yes.
Seven? Okay. No, no one from eight Morgan Lane? Okay, no worries. So we had, those are our two recent burglaries that happened on seven and eight Morgan Lane. Happened last week, I believe. Other than that year-to-date, we've only had four other burglaries in Rolling Hills. So just to reassure you guys, this is one of the safest cities in the county, maybe even the state. So please be assured that you guys are still, you know, we're always patrolling the area. It's unfortunate of the events that happened on Morgan Lane. However, just to sum it up, we had two burglaries on Morgan Lane, seven and eight. We don't necessarily have suspect information. There was video surveillance, surveillance footage, I believe, on eight Morgan Lane? Seven, okay, seven Morgan Lane. Where we do see two suspects inside the garage, and they're actually on their way exiting the garage, assuming leaving the residence at that time. Items that were taken? Let's see. Items that were taken, I don't see any items listed on the first report, but on the second one, I believe there's like, like a safe, jewelry. What else? You know, savings bonds, you know, entry was made through the windows, it appears? Broken window, correct. Okay.
It's broken, not movable window.
Not movable window?
Not the door.
A stationary.
Okay, so since you guys are here, can I ask you guys, you guys were on vacation, correct? Or you guys were out of town?
Yes, out of town, yeah.
Out of town, okay. Was it for a couple of days?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you guys notify anyone that you guys were going to be leaving? Okay, any neighbors were aware that you guys were gone? Okay. Just to tie this in, please be aware that even though this is one of the safest cities, crime in LA County has gone up. We recently just, you know, LA County District Attorneys, any misdemeanors or, you know, low-crime felonies, you know, everyone's getting cited out. We can take them to jail. They can be at our station for three, four, six, seven, eight hours, but they will end up leaving that same day with a citation. That's the way things are. So this is bringing up a lot of crime because now people think, you know, let me just go steal a car, let me go burglarize the house, you know, let me go do some armed robbery, because at the end of the day, I'm only going to spend a few hours in jail. This is just the way things are today. Fortunately, with us, with the sheriff's department, we will take everyone to jail. Everyone is always surprised when they realize that they're not getting a citation on the field, and they're going to be brought to our station. A lot of these people end up being juveniles, unfortunately. But they all think they're going to get a slap on the wrist by coming to our jurisdiction. So let me assure you that that's not going to happen. Going back to the burglaries in Morgan Lane, we were able to capture surveillance cameras, however, we don't know whether they came in through a vehicle or if they came in through the trails. I do know that our detectives walked the trails. They didn't see anything, no footprints, no, you know, leaves disturbed, nothing on the ground. So we can assume that they probably came in from, you know, through the gates with the vehicle. However, because we don't have any more information, we don't know how long they were here for before they actually made entry into the property. This goes on to me asking everyone in here, who has security cameras in their home? Raise your hand. Inside or outside the residence?
Well, it's outside.
Okay. So there's a lot of people who did not raise your hand. So I will highly suggest that everyone here does get security cameras. Ring, blink, anything that will detect any motion. Again, unfortunately, time today, you know, these people do not care as to what crimes they're going to commit. So it's best that we get some video footage. We call that background, you know, background information. So we were able to see on that video footage that there are two suspects, at least, from the footage. Two male, I'm assuming Hispanic suspects. I heard, well, no, I, I saw the video, and they're speaking Spanish. And I can assure you they're speaking Spanish, because prior to becoming a deputy, I did, you know, interpretation from Spanish to English. So they're, they are speaking Spanish. It's a very fast Spanish, but it is Spanish. So just to assure you, that, yeah. They're, they're actually saying, is, the person's asking, is it closed? I don't know what he may be referring to, but he's asking the other person inside, is it closed?
We think he took off as soon as he saw a camera.
That could be.
He walked in, went this way, then he came out, he looked right at the camera, and then he took off. We thought he said, take, turn on the light, which they did, but later we're wrong.
He said, closed, closed could mean a door, you know, it could mean, I, I don't know what else. They probably took the room, the door to the room, the garage door, anything, you know, but that's what I heard. He's asking the other one, is it closed? We could interpret so many things out of that statement, you know.
And it was eight thirty-six PM.
Eight thirty-six PM, so again.
So they had to leave in a car.
Correct. Again, you know, Morgan Lane sits right across, you know, Crenshaw and Silver Spur, at least seven and eight Morgan Lane, and we do have that trail. But I had intel from our detective saying that they walked the trail and nothing was seen. So as to whether they came in a car, how long did they, how long were they here for, or when did they actually enter the gates, we don't know. But going back, security cameras, I would suggest everyone to get them. If you guys are planning on leaving for the night, whether it's to go see a movie, restaurant, leave some lights on inside your house. Leave some lights on, leave a TV running, something, you know. That way whoever is driving up inside these gates, they can see, or at least they'll hear the sound of the TV. They might be like, okay, well, maybe there's someone in there, let's not go inside that house. Okay, same thing if you are going on vacation. How many, how many here know your neighbors really well? Talk to your neighbors. Okay, most of you guys, okay. Let your neighbors know, hey, I'm going to be going out of town for X amount of days. Can you, A, park your car, park your own vehicle in my driveway? Turn on my lights, if you're that comfortable with your neighbor having, you know, the key to your home. Can you just do a routine check on the property? Or you can call us, Lomita Sheriff's Station, and let us know, I will be out of town for this amount of days. Can you guys do patrol checks? We will gladly come and do patrol checks while you guys are out of town to make sure that everything is good. If it's not us, it's also our volunteers. We have volunteers at the station who do these patrol checks as well. Going on, uh.
Okay, they call for that service?
Yeah, you can call the station. Call our non-emergency line and let us know that you will be going out of town, and you would like patrol checks. Again, the holidays are coming. This is a time where a lot of criminals start driving around, seeing what homes are vacant, you know, they start, these people have time. Again, I don't know how hard it is to get in through the gates and out. Either way, I'm, from experience on the other cities nearby, Rancho Lozada, Days, Lomita, you know, they have time, they'll drive around, they'll, they'll see, okay, this person leaves at 5:00 PM. Oh, it's now seven, and there's no lights inside the house. So let's, we're going to assume that there's no one home. They'll come back tomorrow. Oh, seven again, and there's no lights. These people are probably out of town. Yes, sir.
I was wondering if since this has happened, has anybody in the Lomita Sheriff's changed any procedures?
Our procedures remain the same in terms of patrolling and responding to calls for services and burglaries and all other calls that are happening in the now.
Is there any difference in surveillance of the community?
That's actually up to the community. I mean, we do our patrol checks. However, this isn't just Lomita Sheriff's job to do. As residents, this is your home. You want to protect it as much as you can. So you also have to do your part in it, so making sure that all doors are locked to your house. If you are leaving, the windows are unlocked. Your vehicles are locked. Don't leave any belongings in your vehicle, anything, you know, that's pretty expensive on your behalf. Do not leave these things unlocked. Again, you guys do live in a safe city. However, these incidents are occurring. We don't necessarily know where they're coming from. There are no cameras to detect, you know, where the vehicle came from, where the suspects came from. We only have im, image from inside of the house. So these are just procedures and measures that you might want to consider taking. Yes, sir, in back.
You know, you said there's four in Rolling Hills, six including Morgan Lane. I know of five.
Four, four including Morgan Lane.
Right, I know of five in my area, Mill Ridge and Williamsburg, that were, that were called, so it is, do you guys know about those?
So I.
Do you know about those, or?
I don't know everything of, I know there was one in September on Williamsburg.
Two, right, one of, one of.
Two. I, I have record of one. Again, I'm not.
But I'm just wondering why, I'm just educating people here, why do we not know about all of? Now, it's, the people I've heard not, if they do not want it to be known, they're broken into, they don't have to report it to, is that possible?
That, we don't necessarily go and, go and tell the city, you know, hey, this house has been burglarized. It's up to the residents to let them know. If, you know, the city would like to give us a call and say, hey, did this happen? You know, my supervisors will gladly be able to give them that information.
If you're called out, do you tell the city, if you're called out, the city of all the break-ins we might have or not?
If I get called into the city for a break-in? I don't notify the city. I notify the victims.
No, but you don't notify the city, you notify us. So everyone here has no idea there were five. According to you, there were only four.
Correct. That's what our intel, that's what my intel told me today.
Okay. We received, we received five.
Weekly reports from your department based on any calls for service.
Okay. So burgl, so burglaries, I have four.
Everything.
Okay, and that's, yeah.
Okay, before we take questions from the audience, if you, if you have a question, it'd be so much more productive if you write it down and give it to Christian so we can proceed through with this. But I'd like to hear, do you have any information on prior burgl, burglaries that were just mentioned?
The only one I have, where did it go? It was Williamsburg. There is no video footage for that either. The only thing I have is, give me one second. I guess Eastfield was another one back in.
May.
May. Back in May. Informant stating he heard unknown person in his house. So as to that, let's see. It ended up being a burglary report. No persons were seen at the loc, at the location, I'm sorry. So a clock was stolen from the location in four thousand U, four thousand US currency, four thousand dollars. This was a, their residence from the property. But again, no video footage, so.
What do you have on the Williamsburg one?
On the Williamsburg, give me one second, ma'am. Well, informant said he arrived from the house, arrived to the house and found shattered window. Bedrooms were ransacked. Again, no video footage. So we do believe the burglary occurred between September fifteenth through September seventeenth. Again, if people go on vacation, they leave the house, and something does happen, we won't have a specific timeframe. We will use the timeframe that the residents have been, have left the property, and once they return. Again, if there was video footage, we can pinpoint a specific timeframe as to when, you know, the suspects came into the house and when the, when they left. So that's pretty much it. Ransom, jewelry was taken out of this property, and jewelry in the amount of approximately eighty thousand dollars. And they made entry through the master bedroom. So that's as much as I have for those two reports, for those two other incidents. The only reports I do have here are the Morgan Lanes, yes.
Okay, now I'm just mentioning that ours was an attempted burglary in January, and I reported it actually to the city. And we had detective came to our house, and my next-door neighbor, which is Johnson's, they were burglarized, but there was nothing written in Rolling Hills.
That's right, yeah.
Can I have a version to report it directly to the sheriff's department when there's a crime? I mean, if it's, okay, you said you reported the city, so.
No, no, my, I didn't see it in the city saying that this, the burglary happened. There was nothing in the bulletin that mentioning that that happened in the month of January.
Okay, yeah, if something does happen, you know, someone entered your home, didn't take anything, but they still made entry into the property, your backyard, please call us. We are geared twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. We will always send a deputy. If the incident has already occurred, we will send the deputy to make the report. If the incident is occurring in the now, the whole station's coming. Let's just put it that way. The whole station's going to show up. We're going to do a containment of the area. We're going to contain the house. We're going to make call-outs. We're going to have our helicopter drive, flying around with their lights on if it's dark time. You know, if no one's coming out, we're going to make entry. We're, we're even going to call our K-9 units. You know, if we find out that these people are armed, we're going to call our SWAT team. So we have the resources. We're always going to come in multitudes when something big is happening. So rest assured that when you guys call for help, we're going to show up, and we're not that far from you guys. So we should all be here within four minutes, four to five minutes. I do, I do remember seeing, you know, response times was a question. Just know that we have three different types of calls for service. Emergency calls, priority calls, and routine calls. And we prioritize, prioritize them based on the crime. A burglary inside a residence is going to be considered an emergency call. If it's happening in the now, or if the person believes that there are people in the house, we will send everyone to the call. You know, if, if it's something like, someone's parked in my driveway, it might not take the same emergency as the burglary. So that might take a little bit of time. So just be aware that we do have our times, we do have specific times that we must be at the residence. Just to give you, just to let you know, our emergency calls, it's been changed to ten minutes. Ten minutes is what we have to respond to the call. Again, because you guys live so close to us, we will usually be here within four minutes, you know, five minutes max. If it's a priority call, like we've had like a neighbor dispute or a family dispute, well, our timeframe, our max timeframe here to get here is twenty minutes. But again, we will probably be here within ten minutes or less. Routine calls, like someone's parked in my driveway, someone moved my trash cans, that might take, that typically, our routine calls are sixty minutes to respond. That might take twenty minutes, thirty minutes. Again, we will prioritize our calls for services depending on the crime. So again, rest assured, if something big is happening to you, we will get here as soon as we can.
Okay, one of the, one of the questions or comments that came up multiple times was the recommendation about editing our, our guest lists on the, with the gate. I don't know how many people actually look at their list. I, I always do mine by, on the, on the website, and I get to see, you know, the long list of people, and every once in a while, I'll clean up my guest list, especially the, you know, the fourth great friend of my daughter or something like that shouldn't be coming in anymore. But it, there seems to be some question whether the last, the break-ins on Morgan Lane were perpetrated by people within a vehicle or outside. I mean, I, I don't think it's conclusive that they didn't come from outside the city, but I would highly urge everybody to look at their guest list, hopefully, you know, on the website, that you can see all the different people that you allow in and the, the frequency. Some are, you know, permanent guests, and you, you may not want that anymore. There's also a lot of questions, and this is more of an association question, about the access to the delivery trucks, Amazon and, and whatever. And I'd like to, like to have Ty address that as far as what we can do or what we want to do regarding that.
I'll try and address that, and, and I do have two colleagues here tonight. Kristin Rag from the, who's manager of the association, and Mark Grindel, who is our gate supervisor. So if there's some things I can't tell you, I'm going to ask them to feel free to come up and fill in some of the gaps. But I can tell you that when, we, we talked at length with Lieutenant Mike White last week. He came over here and talked with Leah and myself, Kristin, and, and David, the city manager, Christian. And he was telling us, I mean, he, when I told him that we have between forty-one thousand and forty-four thousand non-resident and gate entries per month, that's forty-one thousand, somewhere between forty-one thousand and forty-four thousand gate entries per month. That's fifteen hundred, about fifteen hundred a day. His jaw dropped, Lieutenant White's jaw dropped. He says, that's unbelievable. He says, we don't ever want to have a crime, but to think that you have so little going on here with all those people coming into our, into our city. It's just, it's, it, we have a lot of deliveries these days, which has really grown exponentially since the pandemic. And it's, it's a lot to deal with, no doubt, at the, at the, at the gates. So I can tell you that, that the surveillance, we have video surveillance at the gates. Everybody who comes in, we, we have video of the drivers coming in. We have license plate readers. There's, there's two of them, one of which goes to the association. The other goes to the sheriff's department. They have a list if there's a felon, like the known felon, whose license plate comes up. They are here within like minutes and take, and that's happened several times this year, where they've taken, you know, found people and gotten them out of our city and arrested them. As far as delivery trucks like Amazon, I can tell you that's gone up a huge amount. And it's something that we will be dealing with at the association. We have to deal with it. We, we haven't really, we've talked about speeding and things like that, but now this is a whole new thing that's going on that we have to, have to look at. So I, we have a meeting this Thursday night, the board meeting for the Rolling Hills Community Association. It'll be at seven thirty, next door. And we will be, on the agenda is safety and security, so we will be addressing any, those kind of topics. And if you have something to ask that we don't cover tonight, or that we, I can't really answer. I'm just a board member, so I can't make any decisions or anything like that. But you're welcome to come. I would encourage you to come and, and participate at those meetings. And we will be talking about access and things like that. I will, there, Pat, you had mentioned just earlier about the patrol service, and I saw a lot of questions about patrol service on here. We've covered it in our Rolling Hills Community Association newsletter, but some things have to be repeated a number of times, and maybe not everybody reads that when it comes out. But we do employ, we, the association has employed a, it was, for the past eight or nine months. But we do employ, we, the association has employed a, it was, uh, for the past eight or nine months, Nordic Security. They just got bought by Allied, I believe it's Allied Security or Allied Universal. Uh, we have a patrol service that is here Thursday night, Thursday, Friday and Saturday nights from, I believe it's five thirty in the afternoon until midnight. And it drives around and it goes, uh, sometimes it sits at the corner here of, of, uh, saddle, saddleback and, and Portuguese Ben Road just to be seen and be visible, but we have given them instructions, stay, go, go throughout the community, but pay special attention, attention to the border areas. Because we know that that's kind of been where a lot of things have been happening and it's maybe easier pickings because of trails and things like that. But, uh, they are here Thursday through Sunday, five thirty to midnight. Uh, again, we will be, I think we'll be addressing incoming guests and things like that. I totally agree with what Pat said, pare your list down, that's something we'll be sending out, I'm sure, to our members to, to just, we, we need to, when you have forty thousand plus people coming in or entries per month, it, it's, it's a lot to deal with. I will tell you, I spent half an hour at the Crest Gate today, uh, with Terry Dahlman. And we, Mark puts like regulars at the gate during the day when we have a lot of traffic. That's when a lot of, a lot of guest service people come in. I was blown away myself, being there for half an hour. He knew almost every single person that was coming through. It, I mean, he knew them by name, by sight, by, you know, and it, and he still took down all the information, but these guys do, they really work hard to do a good job for us, I will say that. We never want any problems, but they're, we're gonna try and avoid as many as possible.
Ty, I can't, uh, make the meeting on Thursday, but, uh, there was, was a question in my household about, um, delivery drivers in unmarked vehicles coming in, you know, after hours, I would say or before, like before seven or, you know, after five. You know, we have, the city has contractor hours that, that have to be, uh, maintained. But, uh, the, the unmarked vehicles that come down your driveway, just somebody's, you know, little sedan or whatever. It, it's a little unnerving sometimes when they, when they do that.
Okay, um, you know, the, the policy is that a- any marked delivery service is, you know, th- they come in and they're going to multiple addresses almost every time. Uh, then we do have the issue with, with the unmarked vehicles, that's generally Amazon Flex who's doing that. But it's also Uber Eats and those other app-based services like that. When they come to the gate, we get their full name and their license plate number and the address that they're going to. And that is added to the resident's guest list. Of course, you know, they, they have to be on the resident's guest list in order to get in, if not, if they're not on the guest list, we will call. Um, we recently, in the last six or eight months, uh, Amazon Flex has gotten more and more popular. And they have this delivery service as early as four AM. Well, we prohibit them from coming into the city until six AM. Because we don't want them driving around the city in the dark and getting onto people's properties to, to, you know, to, even if they're delivering a package, it's scary. What should be happening with unmarked, uh, um, deliveries, uh, with, with Amazon. Uh, you should be getting a call from a resident if they're not on your guest list generally. But we want people to know that there is a vehicle that's gonna be coming onto your property to do a delivery. Um, and so I, that, I don't know if that happens with every single one of them, but as you mentioned, because it's an unmarked vehicle, you don't know who it is. So we try and alert you that, that's, that, you know, that that is coming to your house. So, um, you know, and that, that's pretty much the, the, the delivery policy there, so. Um, uh, go, go ahead.
Mark, do you ask for any photo identification for these thousands of people that are coming in?
We do not currently do that.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I have never gotten any, uh, any call from any gate that said Amazon was coming to my house. Or UPS or Flex.
Okay.
Because as you said, there are multiple, so what?
Right. Well, okay, and the thing is, let, let me add something on, on the, on the Flex deliveries. First off, Amazon is, and UPS and FedEx are probably coming in here three or four times a day. And they're hitting five to ten houses every time they come in. So we are not asking them for a list of, of everyone that they're going to. And we're not logging them into every, into every residence. Um, with the Amazon Flex drivers, they're usually just going to one house, but sometimes it's two or three. And again, y- you know, we, we don't log them into every address that they're going to at this point. But we do have their information captured, at least, their driver's light, you know, they're, not their driver, their license plate and their, uh, and their name and the company that they work for. Did that answer your question?
Uh, yes, I want to just follow a question slightly different. Do we need to look at the license plate numbers of cars leaving the city as well?
We do.
Cell phone?
It's, it's, yeah, there, there are LPR readers or license plate readers at all the gates for the entries and for the exits. So. Go, go ahead.
And she needs the microphone.
Oh, okay. I have a quick question. So in the mornings, when you do have, you know, like gardeners, uh, multiple people in a car, do you still just get the driver's information or is it the passengers in the vehicle too?
Just the driver.
The driver, okay.
Just the driver.
Yeah, for those, hold on just a second. Um, if you could repeat the question, so the people that are, you know, on YouTube, uh, that would be very helpful. For them to know what the, what the question being answered is.
Okay.
Did you, did you check on Sat- Saturday a week ago at eight thirty-five? They checked the hour afterwards as far as someone unusual leaving? Because it's, I don't know, I think they were in a hurry when they saw the camera, they thought they might have been being filmed.
Right.
So I don't know when that.
All, all the entries for that day were checked. Oh, I'm sorry. Did, did, did we check, uh, for all the exits, uh, from the city on the day of the burglaries? Eight thirty-five.
Eight thirty-six.
Right. So, um, what we did was, um, I, I compared the guest entries to the license plate reads. Those are two different things. Uh, and I, uh, cause a license plate reader, it registers every time the license plate comes through. And I compare that to the list of cars that were actually logged into the system by the, by the, uh, gate attendant. And if there are any discrepancies there, I went in and looked at the video on there. The problem about, did anybody look suspicious or that kind of thing, that's a very tough question. You know, I mean, we get Uber drivers and, you know, nineteen eighty Toyotas that don't look that great. And it's, you know, but they've got the food. So, you know, uh, the, 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 the sheriff's department has asked for some certain information about entries and everything, and they are reviewing that, so.
So it's being looked at right now?
Should be looked, being looked at by the detectives, yes.
Okay, I've got, uh, three questions for the audience I'd like Deputy Lopez to answer. The first one is, do you respond to minor assaults, uh, delivery? Does that come to property with, hmm, nothing to deliver crime? I'm not, I don't quite understand that question, but, uh, you, I guess you can answer the assault question.
So to answer, yes, the assault question, any call for service, no matter how small you think it is, we will always send a deputy. If someone punched you and that person has left, but you are, you still called us, we will still show up and take the report. We will get all your information. If, again, if it's something simple as a neighbor dispute, we will come and try to resolve the issue for you guys or try to come up with a solution so that there's peace between you guys. So again, any call for service that you call Lomita Station, we will come. It is in our policy to come. Yes, all right, well, 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 give me one second ma'am, there's another one.
Um, how many patrol deputies are now assigned to the Lomita Station?
So per shift, we have three shifts, graveyard, AMs and PMs. Per shift, there's always gonna be between eight and ten people on the in-service. And that's not including people that sign up for overtime. So those are just extra vehicles for us to have. And we are all over the city, Lomita, Rolling Hills, Rolling Hills Estates, Rancho Palos Verdes and unincorporated San Pedro and unincorporated Palos Verdes Estates, so states lain down on Crenshaw. So we do have deputies patrolling twenty-four seven.
Okay, and the last one, I'm not sure if you can answer it, would be a collaborative answer, but how much information concerning a reported crime can be disclosed in the community newsletters? And I think that's a function of how much you would be able to release.
So if it's an ongoing investigation, we're not gonna release all the information. We might just be able to relay burglary occurred, you know, items were taken. We may have surveillance video, we don't have surveillance video and we're unsure of who the suspects are at the moment. The rest, I mean, I, I would say it's up to the victim's discretion. I don't know if you guys have Nextdoor, a lot of people like to post these things on Nextdoor. Um, again, that is up to the victim's discretion and the city. I don't know how much the city would wanna put into these newsletters. That's, I think, for you guys to decide.
Well, I, I think we, we put in our, our, the city, uh, the bi-weekly Blues newsletter, we put in as much as we do get from the sheriff's department. I mean, we're not, uh, probably not putting addresses in, uh, necessarily, but, uh, I mean, we're, we're sharing the information that we can get with the community, is what I understand.
That's correct. So most times we report no crime if there's no crime, uh, or i- if there's an arrest or, uh, or a crime like, uh, this most recent one, it will list, you know, that there was one burglary reported. And that's, that's the extent of the information we get.
I've got another question here that, uh, I think would be better answered. Did you have to follow up on that?
I just, I just wanna say that, uh, um, um, on the first board meeting of, of every month, uh, I, I do a pretty extensive report to the board of directors. Uh, it's the gate supervisor's report, and I do list in there any crimes that were committed in the last month that were reported by the sheriff's department. And also other ins- incidents that might happen, like, you know, somebody who ran the gate or possible trespasser. So that there's a lot of information that's in there that, uh, that you may not see on a sheriff's report because it wasn't reported to a sheriff, so. That's it.
Is that available?
It's in the board packet on, uh, it's, whenever they do, it's the first, my portion is the first meeting of every month. And so that is all in the board packet there.
Okay, this question, uh, is also for the association that says implementation of covered six recommendations concerning creating both a natural and man, and man-made barriers along the city perimeter along with selected placement of cameras for monitoring in real time.
All right, I'm Kristen Rag, I'm the homeowners' association manager. And, um, some years ago, the association hired a security consultant to come out and do a security assessment of the community. Um, I believe it was twenty eighteen or thereabouts. Um, and so some of the things that were recommended were to create some barriers around the city uh, at some of the trail entrances and other areas that were vulnerable to make them less attractive and less easy to enter the city. And, um, excuse me, um, most of the recommendations were implemented that were in that report. Um, and actually, the board's gonna be considering doing another security assessment at Thursday's meeting. Um, over, uh, in East, in the Eastfield area where there was concern, um, close to PB Drive East, the association just put up, act, uh, just put up a solid wood wall to block off a trail access there where there weren't any horses coming in. And the homeowners had, um, expressed concern and it was actually after the, um, burglary on Eastfield back in May. So the, so that, uh, was put up. So to answer your question, yes, the association is implementing things like that.
What about ours?
Um, there is, the staff report that the board's gonna get on Thursday or is getting in preparation for Thursday does talk about different trail entrances, which ones we have assessed as being used, which ones are closer to streets, which ones are used mostly by pedestrians versus horseback riders with, um, recommendations on what can be done with each one of those. So.
Okay, let me ask a couple more questions of the sheriff's deputy, please. Um, one is, uh, is there a use of force guideline if you encounter someone in your home?
I mean, if someone's entering my home, I'm gonna use whatever I have to get them out. It's, you know, someone's entering your home to commit a burglary or any other type of felony, there's intent. Or, or else they wouldn't have entered your home, so if you were me, you know.
I think the question.
I do have a gun, yes, and I do have it at home too, however.
I think some of our residents do as well, and they're looking for, you know, what guidelines.
I mean, as long as it's considered self-defense, you know, I would say go for it. You know, but, but if someone's trying to attack you, by all means, yeah, do whatever you can, someone's entering your home. You know, if you wanna shoot, you know, to scare them, that's fine, you know. Again, it's totally your discretion. You guys, you guys have all the authority, you guys. You guys, I mean, with LA County's district attorney, which I'm not gonna talk about, yeah, there's a lot of things that could happen. You know, you use deadly force. Um, but, I mean, if you can fight, you know, call us, we'll come and do the dirty work for you guys. By all means, um, give us a call, but, you know. It, it's very hard to tell because these, these things can be very quick. You know, someone entering your home while you're inside the house, a lot of things can happen and a lot of things can happen and, you know, I, I won't be able to tell you, you know, this is what you should do. I would say just use your, use your good judgment and see, you know, you can use, any, anything can be a weapon. From a frying pan, you know, to a remote control. You know, lock yourself in a bathroom, lock yourself in a closet, call us. You know, there are so many options that you can take. You know, if you do have a weapon, I hope you do know the laws, you know, to use that weapon inside your house. But be very, very, um, well-versed in that department, you know, if you don't have a gun. Again, if you don't practice shooting with the gun, who knows if you're actually gonna shoot the person entering the home, you know? It, it, all it takes is practice, but there's so many options that I can give you. But there's really not one that's the answer to it. It all depends on the situation. You know, a lot of people can get, a lot of criminals can get spooked when they hear someone inside the house, that they'll run away. Sometimes these people just wanna grab something, not deal with you and take off. Other times, you know, they might wanna face you and, again, I don't know the mindset of these criminals. You don't know the mindset of the criminals. So your best, your best bet is if you want, hide and call us and we should be here soon.
Okay, another question sort of along the legal description, I guess, it says, uh, it's a little hard to read this cause a pen gave out, but it asks about the difference between a robbery and a burglary? Or, um, is this in the term in log? I can't understand this, I'm sorry.
So the difference between a robbery and a burglary, a burglary is someone entering your home and you not being home. Uh, you have no idea that someone just went inside your house. A robbery is someone facing you, give me your, give me your jewelry or I'm gonna kill you. Or I'm gonna hurt you, I'm gonna, I'm, my fist is already up in the air, ready to hit you. There is force or fear to commit a robbery and there is none of that when it comes to a burglary. So again, force or fear to the victim in order for those items to be taken away. Whereas in a ro- in a burglary, there is no force or fear because the victim has no idea that, you know, things are being taken away from them. That is the difference.
Okay, a couple of questions for the audience.
Yes, in the back.
Yes, uh, my concern, I, I came this evening because I, I'm concerned about the security at the gate. I know the Lomita Sheriff's Station, I know you're gonna do your job. But, and Morgan Lane, both families were not home. How, how does that happen? How does someone come in, know the, or maybe not know, and luckily people weren't there? But I am concerned about the security at our guard gates.
Okay, again, that's an association, um, response hopefully?
Well, uh, let me just be clear, they're not guard gates, they're, they're gate attendants, but I, I, well, I understand that, but I just, you know, th- they, they do provide a certain element of security back here, which is one of the big reasons why we live here. Uh, that's not to say we shouldn't be taking our own personal responsibility for our own properties too. We will, I know we'll be addressing gate access on Thursday night, we'll be talking about gate access. We'll also be talking about trail security. Because like in the Morgan Lane situation, it could have been either one of those, we don't know exactly. Now Lieutenant White seemed to believe. We don't know exactly. Now, Lieutenant White seemed to believe it was professionals that were in your home on last Saturday. And we, or we'd go Saturday, and so, we will, you know, when you have that many people, people that live here, they want the convenience, and they want the security as well. And it's really, it's very difficult to be able to balance that, but that's one of the things we will be tackling this Thursday night at 7:30. I guarantee it, we will be talking about it, because your safety's important to us. More than the convenience is important, your safety is.
Can I add to that? Going back to, you know, people coming into the property, how many of you guys have gardeners, pool cleaners, housekeepers? People that go inside your house or are around your house? Raise, show of hands.
Everybody.
Who actually keeps an eye to see what they're doing or where they're going? No one really, because, well, this is my gardener, they come every weekend, this is my pool guy, he's cleaning my back, my pool, you know, every Saturday. No one really keeps an eye on these people. Now, I'm not saying these are the people who are committing the crimes, but just to give you an idea, what's to say that, you know, me, the pool cleaner, hey, can I use your restroom, and I'm going to go inside your house, now I can see where everything's at. I can see where your kitchen is, I can see where your bedroom is, I can see, you know, maybe where you keep your safe. You don't know, because you don't, you're not really paying attention as to what they're doing, because there's no real threat at the moment. So, just a heads up, just keep an eye on people that come inside your house, you know, maybe close the doors when these people are in. If you do let them go inside the restroom, make sure you keep an eye as to them walking into the restroom, not maybe disappearing into another room or peeking into, you know, someone else's bedroom. These are just things that we don't think about, because we're so comfortable with them being in our residence.
I have a question just regarding that. I sent a question to Kristin, that this kind of pertains, that's why I wanted to throw it out there. But how do we know, like, say, my gardeners are supposed to come on Tuesdays, how do I know that they're not coming through the gate six other days of the week? Where's my history? So, I can check my own history?
Repeat the question.
Okay, the question was, how do you see your guests' history? And you should, each of your Dwelling Live pages has a guest list on it, of course. And there is a button on the, but when you go to the guest list, it's a line list of all your guests, and there is a entry total next to each name. So, you have to click on it, and that will tell you all the dates and times that they came in. If you want a printed report, unfortunately, I don't believe that you can...
You can.
You can? Okay. Your site's a little bit different than the one I use, so...
Yeah, you can log into your Dwelling Live account, and it's easier to see it on a laptop, because their writing's very small. But if you go to the, your guest list, there, along the top, there is a button that says "Guest History", and you can pull up your guest history, I think, for almost a year, but it will only print, you know, show you one month at a time. So, you have to put in 30 days, 30 days, 30 days, but you can go back quite far and see everybody who logged in at its, by date.
But not on a cell phone?
It's hard to see on a cell phone.
How much is?
Yeah, so, I know that it is available on a desktop, so I am not, I don't usually use their mobile app, so I'm not sure of capabilities through the mobile app, but it is available on a home computer, and we can certainly help you with that as well, if you call the office tomorrow.
Kristin, thanks.
Every time somebody turns into your address, I get an email, and I just recently asked to be texted. So, anytime somebody says they're coming into my address at the gate, I get a text. So, if you guys aren't getting that, and you can get out here on your local phone, you should do that. It's very easy, just go onto the Dwelling website, and there's a way to say, "How would you like to be notified?" So, that's the way to do it. I mean, if, like Mark said, it's trading off conveniences, if you want to be called every time a friend or gardener comes, you can do that. Just don't put them on your permanent guest list, and they will have to call you. It's a pain, right? But that's something we have to decide, how much convenience is worth?
There is also a capability in your, in the Dwelling Live system where you can limit your gardener. If you only want your gardener to come in on Tuesdays, and that's the only day they're authorized to come to your house, you can do that. So, you can say, "There are only a lot on Tuesdays." So, Roger.
Okay, Kristin, since we don't have anybody on our staff, and we don't have any gate attendants who have the requisite credentials to train residents on security-related issues, has thought been given to having Cover 6, who has already done a very extensive in 2019, a security survey of this community, to provide training for residents. So, when they have questions about, you know, what light do I buy, what video camera do I install? How do I go about doing these things? You folks say, this is the Association, we're not responsible for security, the residents are. But then the residents come to the Association and say, "Well, what do we do?" Since you can't answer the question confidently, what about having Cover 6 come in here and provide, like, a second session of something like this? So that members who do have questions can ask the premier security company in the country, they'll do it. And once upon a time, they would do it, because I'd ask them, and they would do it at no cost.
Okay, so that was a very long question, and Kristin, can you summarize that?
That's a really great suggestion, to have a professional security service come out and do a workshop for homeowners on what they can do at their own homes to be better prepared to collect evidence if somebody were to come into your home with cameras and that kind of thing, to create more deterrence around your home, to make your house less attractive to someone who might want to break in, and other things you can do, much like what the sheriff's deputy has said as well. So, I know the sheriff's deputy also has a list of those, and then that was also included on the notice for the town hall meeting prepared by the city.
So, following up on the evidence collection comment, a question from one of the council members regarding DNA collection. I know that there was at least one crime that was solved years past because of DNA collection, and the question is, is that still being, is DNA being collected at the recent burglaries?
So, I know for the Morgan Lane property that had the video footage, I know Crime Lab, I believe Crime Lab was requested since, I believe, fingerprints or a footprint...
They never came.
They haven't came yet? Okay. I don't, I can't give you an estimate?
Aid. They didn't come.
They came to aid? Okay. Okay. So, but not on your property? Okay. So, I'm not sure if the deputy requested...
He said he would.
He said, okay, so, again, I don't know the timeframe for our Crime Lab. We only have one Crime Lab for the whole department, and, you know, I don't know their schedule. So, if you are, if the deputy did request for them to come, then they will be coming. I just, I can't give you a timeframe for that, unfortunately.
Can I just say, at the meeting, we did have, in addition to Lieutenant White, we also had the investigator that was working your cases, and they did say that they were requesting DNA on that, as well as print.
There was blood in it.
Yeah, yeah, they said they had blood, so...
So, for future reference, if there is a crime that happened inside your home, and maybe fingerprints were left, or a cigarette bud was left, or someone ate your chips, don't throw those items away. Call us to request a Crime Lab to come and get the DNA, because that is DNA sample, you know, so just keep that in mind, yes.
I mean, the truth is that I haven't put anything back in my closet, and it's a mess, obviously, and it's been a week and a half, basically. So, they're not coming, or they, I mean, I don't think they're coming, or I don't know what they're going to get, because as soon as I start putting stuff away...
It's going to be your fingerprints. Yeah. Like I said, I don't have the timeframe. You know, usually, us as deputies, when we go for these calls for services, and we do know that there's fingerprints, or there's evidence left behind, we will fill out a print deputy request, which is for Crime Lab to come, but we never know the status as to when they will be coming out.
The burglars had their gloves on.
Yeah, and that's the thing, a lot of these burglars, they already know, and on the video footage, their face is covered, you know, gloves and everything. So, they're pretty much well-versed on how to do this.
Okay, we've covered a lot of ground here, we've got time for a couple more questions, but somebody that hasn't asked yet, Jim?
Yes, a couple of days ago, we had one suggested that the employee and outside forensic people would come in, because it was such a long wait, they ever get anything processed by the LA cap, the Sheriff's Department, that's the way it is. And whatever happened to that, I thought they implemented it for a while anyway, because that was one of the big things. And he was paying, he said it was going to cost so much money, not a lot, because we didn't have a lot of crime, but that way, they would respond in a timely manner, instead of days, weeks, months later, you know?
Yeah, I don't know anything about that, I think that was before my time, so I can't answer that. Yeah, questions?
From L A S D.
On my left over here.
We've lived here over 30 years, and I don't remember ever coming to a meeting or getting notification for a meeting regarding sex. Are we dealing with an epidemic in evolution here?
Well, that's hard to say.
There certainly has been an increase or...
There are logs that count annually for the number of robberies, robberies, things of this sort. Do we have any idea of how often this occurred in the past?
Well, I've been here 27 years, and I read the Blue Newsletter, and it's, a report of a burglary or robbery is a fairly infrequent event, but I will...
We've never seen that.
I will say that there's been a concentration of them lately, and I think that's why everybody's here tonight, because there's just been more activity, and it's, you know, it's creating concern, and I share that concern. So, I don't know about the historic records that go back 40 years, but I think, since I've been at City Council for eight years now, a couple a year has been about average, maybe, or a lot, and when you have three or four or five in a concentrated period of time, it is concerning.
And, again, the meeting on Thursday with Lieutenant White and the investigator, 17 in since...
2018.
2018. 17 burglaries?
17 burglaries.
In five years. Yes, sir.
So, I'm going to address this to the Sheriff's Deputy. So, it seems to be, I see a pattern here, but maybe you don't. I see Williamsburg Lane as a cul-de-sac near an exit point with a trail. I see Morgan Lane, cul-de-sac, close to an exit point with a trail. I see Eastview with a trail, and you blocked that off. It seems to me, there's, it's a pattern. They went in Williamsburg Lane, they trashed the bedrooms. Tom's house, they completely trashed the bedroom. It's got to be, I mean, very similar MO.
Beds were trashed.
So, because different timeframes, Morgan Lane, we can probably assume that it's the same suspects on both properties. However, Williamsburg, we can't necessarily say that. We can't say the same thing for what happened on Eastfield.
Or Middle Ridge.
Yeah. Any of these, yeah, any of these incidents, we can't necessarily say those are the same people, because we don't have the facts. We don't have the video footage to say, yep, same gray, you know, gray sweater, maroon pants. On Williamsburg, gray sweater, maroon pants. We don't have that.
Yeah, but so here's what you could do. You've got video of plates going in and out of the city. You've got incidents on certain spots. You could have a common license plate going out of the city, approximation of the burglaries.
So, again, we can all assume that, but unfortunately, we rely on the facts. I could easily tell you, hey, what happened on Morgan Lane, you know, maybe they came in through a different trail, or they came in, you know, through PB Drive South, and they, you know, hiked the whole hill up.
Well, it's just...
It's, again, but...
I'm just saying, I'm just...
And I understand...
I wish we had the detective in here.
And I understand, but again, if we don't have the proof, I can't put in my report. The suspects came in from the trail, because no one saw them coming in through there. No one saw them coming in through the gates, you know? The judge will not let, you know, if that was taken in court...
For evidence.
Exactly, but again, and as I...
Empty evidence here.
As I explained earlier, the detectives did walk the trail. There were no footprints, no nothing, to suggest that someone came in through that area.
But my point would be, the reason why the trail, the cul-de-sac close to the exit is because these guys are professionals. If they have one exit blocked, they've got another exit to go. I mean, it just, to me, this makes sense to me, but, and all three of these, all the same thing.
And, again, that can be one possibility. I can also give you the possibility of maybe gardeners that know their schedule, maybe gardeners or pool people, pool cleaners, housekeepers, that know when, you know, the homeowners won't be home, you know? There's a lot of possibilities, and...
The cul-de-sac, three areas.
And this, this is, yeah. It's a good point, I'm not, I'm not saying no to it, I'm just saying, if there's no facts to say that that's exactly what happened, I can't, I can't say yes, because now everyone's going to think, yes, they came in through the trails.
I can...
No, he's just saying, I think what he's saying is that the fact that there was an escape route besides the road, if they had to scoot out the trail, that's interesting. I hadn't thought of that. I think that's pretty, you know, but there was no, unfortunately, I've seen the video footage, and there's, you can't see these guys at all. They're totally covered, you know, it's just, hopefully, they'll get some DNA, hopefully, they'll find, figure something out. Maybe the license plate reader, who knows, but it just, they're working on it, I'm sure, but...
Todd, didn't they steal a safe? They're not taking that down the trail.
Well, I was going to ask Jerry how big the safe was.
Yeah, it's a small safe.
It was a small safe, they could have rolled it out in the suitcase that they used out of the house.
Okay.
If I can...
I have one question.
Wait, hold on a second, hold on, hold on, Kristin?
I just wanted to address Mr. Gray's discussions about the trails. The Association has been working to monitor the trails. We've looked at a number of different options. There are a lot of challenges, partly because there's not electricity out to most of those spots. They're very remote, or they can be very remote. There's spotty cell service, a lot of them rely on cell phones. We have done some stop-gap things with hunting cameras that are motion-activated to try and capture images of people or whomever might be coming up the trails. We did have one that was where one resident did allow us to tie into their Wi-Fi and electricity, so we could monitor one spot. But if, as residents are planning to put in cameras in your, on your homes, it would, if you have a trail next to your home or have an area that is easily, you know, accessed, or people use it a lot, consider putting a camera there as well, because you do have the Wi-Fi access, you have the power to run something like that. You may already have a system in your home, and it ties into your home Wi-Fi, and you may even get an alert if it has a motion sensor on it. Or if something does happen, God forbid, after the fact, we'll have some kind of evidence, you know, with, I know the riches, it was so helpful because it had a timestamp on it. We knew when something was happening, and so that really helped us collect the license plate recognition information and then get to the sheriff effective, you know, in a really timely manner. So, consider that.
Okay, I saw Tracy's hand up in the back.
No.
Don't worry.
Scott's question was...
I got a question. I still didn't get an answer, I asked the first question. Lea sent us 18, right, robberies, since 2018, how many?
17.
17. I know of five recently. What, what, we're all here, this is, you're not even close, man, I'm sorry, the amount, we don't know.
Are we not getting the right number, or, we're all sitting here, there's way more, way more. Way more crime than you guys even know about, I don't know why.
May I address part of this, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, we interrupt...
Okay, uh, we, it's roughly, it's 17 according to the LA SD reports that, uh, that they send out every other week. It looks like this. Uh, I went through from January 1st of 2018 to current and it came up with 17 burglaries here in Rolling Hills in that timeframe. Um, comparatively, the city of RPV since January 1st, 2019 to now has had 360...
It's all good, it's all good, because it doesn't matter, we're getting, we're getting more than you guys know, so that's okay.
I, I just wanna say that the data is available. I know a lot of people have asked about that and if you, if you go to the RPV website, they post this every, every, every other week. So, you know, I mean, and I think there's a discrepancy in burg, in the, in the, uh, the burglaries because some of them weren't reported.
Okay, so we're not getting a full report, so there are way more burglaries than you guys. And secondly, why don't we have a private car in our city right now? We have 600, 600, 600 homes, if y'all get $1,000 or $600,000, wanna have a private car driving around? Show of hands, how many people would pay $500 per year to have a private car drive around the city? And just sit on it?
So, so we're gonna have to wrap this up soon, but, but I would, I would encourage those of you that still have questions after we wrap it up here to come to the city council meeting on Monday and give your comments then, or the association or both. Uh, theirs is on Thursday, this week, right?
Thursday, Thursday, 7:30 PM. Next door.
Okay, um, so I would, I'll take one last question, ma'am.
We...
Yes?
It's not a question, it's a thank you. I think it's a wonderful meeting, what others today in United States has a kind of community we support, support. I think it's wonderful what you've done and Colin is all caring and others, so you have to be congratulated for all you have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, again, city council is Monday at 7 o'clock and, uh, association is Thursday at 7:30?
Yes, 7:30. How about a round of applause for Officer Lopez here, please? Thank you for all you do and I would also say, call when you're going on vacation, call the sheriff's department. The more police presence we have in the community, the better it'll be.